Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 28th, 2023 study session of the Olympia, I guess it's the work session of Olympia City Council. Before we get started, I wanted to make a couple announcements. We have a full quorum here tonight, but council member partially is excused. I also want to make a very exciting announcement that went out in the press release today. So this is not a spoiler alert, but we are finally able to introduce Rich Hoy as our Assistant City Manager rather than interim. So he will join Debbie Sullivan as co-Assistant City Managers, and we could not be happier. It's a great team. So with that, we don't have any kind of motions this evening. Work sessions are just for us to be literally on the ground here and having a lot of back and forth around meaty topics. And so the one for today, we have two. The first one is discussing how to draft a request for proposal for 108 State, which was formerly known as our City Hall and as our original fire station one. And it's been sitting empty for quite some time. We're going to learn a lot more about that from our Economic Development Director, Mike Reed.
Well, thank you, Council. Again, my name's Mike Reed. I'm your Economic Development Director. And so this evening, we will be going through the concept of a request for proposals for the property that I will be referring to as 108 State. And here we are. So this property is in a really key location for us. It is at the intersection of Capitol Way and State Avenue in the sort of heart of our downtown. As the mayor mentioned, it was formerly a city hall and a fire station. It was built in 1912. It is actually the oldest building that the city has in its portfolio, and it's about 14,000, not about, it is 14,790 square feet. So in September of 2021, we presented to council in a similar study session, looking to get some feedback from you. We're continuing to work on COVID recovery stuff over the course of 2022, and this project slipped a little, but we are now back to you to continue this effort concerning how do we want to put forward the 108 State property? So really, I've got six items that we will go through pretty quickly, and they are the necessary steps for a request for proposal. And it's really what the staff need to successfully be able to execute. And it's also heavily focused on our conversation tonight on items four, five, and six. And the reason we're focusing so deeply on those is for staff to execute, we're going to need real clarity from the council as to the items that are four, five, and six. But to be able to set that conversation up correctly, I'm going to go through items one, two, and three first. So there's basically the agenda for the presentation. So first off, you've got your review and development, the RFP development and review team. It'll be a team mixed of staff and some external stakeholders. So from a staff perspective, as the, I will be the, getting a weird echo.
Someone's phone?
I don't know. Anyways, yeah, it's an echo. Sorry. So as the, I'll be the project lead for this effort. And then we do have Eli Cole from Facilities, Kenzie Wang from Finance Department, Mary Grace Godew from Cultural Access Program, Manager Holly Borth, who is in the audience today, newly or recently hired Historic Preservation Officer, Jeff Finch from our Building Department, and Scott Reiver, I think Scott might be here as well. Really, that team really is a pretty deep brain trust of city expertise from multi-departments. And it really will allow us to examine the opportunities that come in concerning this property. And then from an external stakeholder standpoint, I have Annette Pitts, who is the Executive Director for Experience Olympia and Beyond. She is also on our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Carrie Whistler from Olympia Fed, or only Fed, she's a commercial lending expert. She's also on the EDC, the Economic Development Council, and Center for Business and Innovation Board, also is just down the street from this property. And then we are working on partner representation from the Olympia Downtown Alliance and the Parking Business Improvement Area Board as well. So now we'll get into sort of what we would call the due diligence package, or really it's the background materials about the piece of property. And these are things that I think that anybody who's going to be responding to an RFP, we would need to provide them this content. But I also want to share some of the content with you because I think it will help some of the deliberative process as we move through some of these conversations. So just very high level, we would be providing information on the property and the lease valuation. So as an example, we have a real estate appraisal that was done in 2019 that put the property value at about 2.2 million. The current assessed value, sort of interesting, has significantly increased over the last couple of years, and we're currently looking at a assessed value of 4.3 million. Also, another thing that we could include in a due diligence package is examples of current lease rates downtown. So right now, current lease rates for comparable buildings downtown, they're ranging from about $11 to $17 per square foot. That really depends on a number of factors, age of the building, the quality, the condition, the landlord, its location. So that's why you see such a pretty big range there. Typically, what we see on leases like that, that's an annualized number. So what you would do is you would take the square footage and you would multiply it by that number. It gives you a rate there or the total amount. And then modified gross means that they're probably including in some of this, some of the extra charges, like that might include your property, your portion of property taxes, or it could include maybe some portion of your utilities might get included in that. So there's a range there. We would also be wanting to provide to any interested parties some of the anticipated tenant expenses. So examples being, we'd want to let them know, you know, historically, this is what the power utility has been to a building like this, or what sewer costs were, things of that nature. This building does not have any dedicated parking to it. So what would be, what are the parking lease rates in the area? We'd want to provide that to an interested party. Taxes or potential assessments. So we would, if we were leasing the building, we would have to charge a leasehold excise tax. What would that be for something like this property? Other assessments that you could see in that area, if you were a business or a nonprofit, you could pay things like parking, the PBIA fee. We also have a building condition report that indicates the condition of the building. It's in fairly good condition. I actually attached a copy of that report to the staff report, so it's already out there. The building does need some maintenance in its current state. And again, that building was assessed in 2019, so I would think that it would be fair that if we were at 2019 numbers of 1.5 million, 2023 numbers are probably higher. And that really distinct, it was some observed deficiencies with the building, primarily the HVAC system. There's other things too that we could add in here, examples being standard maintenance costs, you know, if that was something that we would keep or a new tenant would take on. But in a building like this, standard maintenance, which would be everything from janitorial expenses, routine maintenance, or in some instances landscaping or things like that, it's probably all in at about seven to eight dollars a square foot is what a good average would be. I think our department, our average for our maintenance expense is about, if you take all the buildings that we provide that service to, you know, the fire station, City Hall, Washington Center, and so on, I think our number is about 539, but we've been able to, that's over a lot of buildings. So there's some economy of scales associated with that. We would also include information about the historic nature of the building. So it is on the Historic Registry. You're not going to be able to do anything significant to the exterior of that building. I mean, it needs some upkeep to it, but it is what it is, very importantly.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. So, so the exterior of the building was modified somewhat when it was converted from a fire station into a office building, basically. So if we wanted to open up one, some of those bays again, that could still happen.
You can make it look more historic as it was, but I don't think that our intention would be to see someone make it less than it, than its historic state.
Watching Holly's face in the back, she's like, nope.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Mike. Um, I, you said our intention is for someone to make it more modern, basically, more historic. I don't think that is true.
No, I, I think I'm.
For me, anyway, go ahead.
I think that the intention with, when you have a designation of a historic, you can't make the building look more modern.
Oh, God.
So I think we were saying that in the inverse there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. You can make it, you can go, you can, you can add historically accurate elements to the building.
Right.
But you cannot, we wouldn't be adding a bunch of neon signs and, and, and modern finishes to the exterior of this building.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. Yeah, I had a little panic moment. It's like, what?
Yes.
Well, and on the last side, you said something about the building electrification requirements. Does the building currently use natural gas?
I believe it does.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's it. Thank you for pointing that out. I didn't hit that point. So as another point, we do have our resolution that does require building electrification for city-owned buildings, once they reach a certain threshold of gift or investment that we've made to those. So that would be something that we would be looking at. What does that mean for this building and where does that expense come from?
Just related to that list, have the seismic upgrades been made? And if they have, that should be in that list of?
The seismic upgrades were made.
Thank you.
So the, another item too is from that sort of background material content, really is just the planning documents that provide us guidance. So really, our downtown strategy, our comp plan and zoning are the things. So this property is zoned urban waterfront. It's a very, pretty broad zoning designation, but really, it's the downtown strategy that I think gives it the highest degree of guidance. This one is located, and you can see on the map there to the right, it's in that pink area, which is the district known as the Capital to Market Character Area. Really, the intention of that area is to improve existing attractions, to create more pedestrian-oriented streetscapes with a mix of uses that draw people between the Capitol Campus, downtown Historic Core, and the Farmer's Market. So really looking at, how does this property be a puzzle piece to connect those pieces there? And then, really, this is a tight timeline. That may not feel like it, but it is. With the end goal being to come back to council with a lease that council would approve, that's, and to try to do that in this calendar year, in a six to eight month turnaround, that's cooking. And that is why, making sure that we have very clear direction as to what's on the table, what's off the table, what your priority may be, that's, that's why we're here tonight. Because I can collect that, I can synthesize that, I can draft an RFP that includes the submittal requirements and the review criteria. If I've got it wrong and I bring the recommendation towards you, we start all over. And there's, if we do that, we will not accomplish this goal in six to eight months. So what you can see here, really tonight, we're going to work on confirming the vision for this project. Once I feel confident that we've got that in place, hopefully by the end of this evening, I will convene our team and we will get moving. Then we would be finalizing a request for proposals document. We would get that out onto the street with broad distribution. We would then be reviewing, I'd have that team review those responses, shortlist and potentially interview, depending upon how, how many responses that we get, and formulate a recommendation that we would then bring back up to council. We would like to be able to recommend to the council in a very similar way to the way that we manage the 3900 Boulevard project. We issued their request for proposals, we synthesized those down, we came to you and said, hey, here's what they look like, here's what we need. And then we ultimately were able to make a recommendation to council and then proceed towards the actual transaction negotiation. After the negotiations occur, then we would bring it back to council. So you've got a number of bites at this apple, but we just don't want to move backward. We always want to be moving forward. And then, so after council approves, we would celebrate because that would be a great milestone to achieve. So this is where we get really into the meat of discussion, and I will do less talking. I'm going to hit some points, but it's, this is going to turn into a bit of a dialogue with the intention of, that's why we're in a study session. So I synthesized down what I feel like we heard from you the last time we presented this information. And what I really need to do is confirm, did I get it right? And is this still the same? Has something changed between last time we, we brought this to you? So really, what, I'm going to, and I'll go through all seven of these items, and we're going to have maybe a little bit of a dialogue, if that's all right. So the first thing that I think really resonated loudly when we combed through your comments on this, was that the historic building in that key location must be leveraged. It's a non-option. We are not going to put something, or we don't want to see something go into that building that could just be in any old strip mall anywhere in USA. It really needs to take advantage of the fact that it is on a primary corner in our downtown, and it is a historic building. It really needs to generate that foot traffic that, that Capital to Market District talks about. We're trying to create that flow up and down that Capitol Way, and we really want to create a destination. This should be something that people come to and are excited about. So I'm just going to, I'm going to pause. Does that still feel right? I'm asking. Okay. Yes, yes, okay. The second one, this one, if I, if I could redo this, I'd put maybe air quotes over preferred. What I heard is owning the building is preferred. It's important maybe to put us in a landlord position. But there was also conversation that, you know, executing the right use may trump that. So if somebody really can hit a home run on number one there, but they say to us, you know, we may need to be able to own the building and leverage the equity in the building or something along those lines, we, we may want to be able to entertain that. So that's why it's preferred, but it's not exclusive in the way that I've presented it. Does that make sense?
Strongly prefer it.
Strongly prefer it.
Okay.
This is the one that's been bothering me a little bit, and I appreciate your explanation because I don't want to preclude the ultimate private-public nonprofit partnership, which may include needing land ownership long-term for certain tax benefits or what else, whatever else I might not be thinking of. And so I want to make sure we don't miss something by being too strict, even if we feel like we want to maintain long-term ownership. But the other thing I'll say is, the city cannot afford to own this building long-term. And so as a, as a leaseholder, I need like a hundred-year contract to be able to make sure that it is taken care of if we're going to keep it.
I'd, I'd say for myself that it is strongly preferred that we retain ownership, and it's very much going to depend on number five, which we're going to get to in terms, if, if we go into a different scenario where we don't retain that ownership.
Got it. It's helpful.
And, and I'll, I'll say, I, you know, recalling the conversation we had earlier, there's, there's, there's the possibility that the group of folks coming together will, will have an interest in owning, as Jim's described. And so I would, I would be open to that, but I think most of our conversations, most of our energy have assumed that, that we would remain the landlord, at least for this initial use, so.
And I, I think you guys are thinking about that right, and it really is in line with kind of where you were last time as well, that, don't preclude, it's important, but, you know, I could think of scenarios where if someone didn't own the building and they're trying to obtain financing, all that they would have to finance would be the assets that they own in the building, and they could not use the building itself as an asset if they're just have a leasehold interest. So I could, there, there, there are, there are things that, that I think makes sense for us to have that flexibility.
Is there a scenario where the city is a partner in that and we're able to leverage the, our resource in that way to support that public-private type non-partnership?
I would say certainly, when it comes to grants, there are a number of grants at both the federal and state levels that need match, and our ownership of the building, we could leverage that, that asset towards those grants as well. Financing gets a little bit trickier because most banks, when they, when they're lending money, want to have collateral, and I think that's what Mike's talking about when we get to there. But there are lots of different ways to raise money for buildings like this.
I think what I, I see for the short term, whether, whether that's 20 years or 50 years, is that this be a model similar to what the Washington Center is and what Hands on Children Museum is for the city. Those are huge assets for our community. They bring people from all over the region and the nation. That's what I want this to be. I want it to be a draw. And I think for it to be successful initially, we need to keep that building in our inventory. And, and so that's all I'll say for right now, but I, I think we do have models that have worked really well, and they, they seem to raise plenty of money without having to own the building. So, thanks.
Okay.
I concur. And I think also what I heard, what I feel and what I heard from council's last discussion on this is that specific interest in retaining the ownership of the exterior of the building, so just the envelope of the building, and really motivated to have the management of the building done by someone else.
Just a thought that popped into my head, thinking about, you know, the Boulevard project and how like, you know, there's the potential, they are working with Habitat, where they own the land and other folks own the building. Is that a similar scenario that we could play out here, where the city could potentially own the land, but like part with the building? And then maybe there's a win-win?
That might be a little tricky because it's a built structure already, but you can do things like in a purchase and sale agreement where you sell the property, you could put a deed restriction on the property or a covenant that says, you know, we'll sell it to you for this kind of use. If you ever use it for something else, it will revert back to us, or if you fail to be able to operate it for such. As an example, the, when the Port of Olympia sold the property to the city for the children's museum, the port put in a provision in that purchase and sale agreement that then carries over onto the deed that said, you can use this property to build, own, and operate a children's museum. If you don't operate a children's museum on this property, it will revert back to the port. So theoretically, you could, you could maintain that desired outcome and the control that you have over its use in a purchase and sale agreement, theoretically. So that's, I'll, I'll keep moving here. Number four, downtown strategy should be the guide for the vision and use. That kind of is related to the item number one, but we talked about it quite a bit. So I think that that's the, the primary driver when we're talking about a vision, if people are trying to imagine the activation, it's the downtown strategy. Number five, financial analysis and evaluation of proposers' ability to execute are required for review. So questions like, how would the building overhead expenses such as rent, tenant improvements, maintenance costs, both staffing and capital, building reserves, utilities, and parking be covered? How will those be covered? And making sure that those are being evaluated as part of the decision-making process. So what I'm, what I heard on that one is when we put out a request for proposals, ask those questions to the proposer, how would you cover these kinds of expenses if you had to pay them? If you don't intend on paying them, you should let us know. But, but how, how are those, how are you going to generate the revenue?
In the pro forma.
Do not pay. Yeah. So, so I, I, I think that that was a pretty clear piece that we got last time was, there needs to be, the degree of sophistication from the, the response document has to be at a level where the respondent has given thought to this kind of question. Yeah.
I think what's important here on this number five is, what we're really saying here is, as part of any proposal that anyone would bring forward, what is it that they're prepared to own as part of this project? And where, where might they need help? Where might they need help from the city, right? So, you know, are they prepared to launch a capital campaign to raise the money they need for tenant improvements? Do they need some help along the way with something? And whatever that is, we just want them to tell us as part of the proposal, what they might need to make their project ultimately successful. So council has everything at your disposal to evaluate and know what you may need to help further invest to make a project successful that comes forward. So I just wanted to add some context there.
Thank you. And I would also add, I mean, we, we, we know that there are certain interested parties that do want to respond to this. There could be some that I haven't heard yet or we haven't heard. We could have some that would say, I'm actually contemplating a for-profit enterprise of some sort. And if there is a for-profit enterprise, they should be paying rent. So how would you be calculating something like that? What's your business plan? You know, those, those are questions that you would ask somebody if they were making that kind of a response. Yes.
Thanks. Mike, in your mind, would, at this point in the, like at the review point in the process, would you know development partners that may be involved in the rehabilitation or remodeling? And would that be included in this step? Or would that come later?
It could come, it depends upon the degree of sophistication and where people are at in that proposal. It definitely, you would want to know that prior to signing a long-term lease with someone. I mean, if you are, if we are obligating this property for 15, 20, 30 years to someone, you would want to know, what, what, what are you going to do with the building? And, and how would you do that? And who are your partners there?
Cool. Well, I think just to keep using the Boulevard example, I want to, would like to see it framed in the, in the, in the proposal as much as possible to get a development team applying, right? Like not just the long-term operator, if that makes sense.
Question six, there was some movement on this question when, when I evaluated some of the responses. And right now, there's a pretty significant, with it being vacant especially, all of the financial obligation of that building is ours. We're paying all the utilities, we're paying all the maintenance, we're paying everything. And so there was a desire of, hey, getting someone in there, it can reduce some of our expense. It activates the space. If they start paying the utility bills, that's a reduction for us. If they can start contributing costs for any kind of improvements to the building, if they can cover any sort of the maintenance costs, we start going down and down and down from what our financial obligation is. I don't know, we didn't land ultimately on how big of a, of a reduction of our obligation, but it did sound like, hey, just even getting somebody in there that can move some of that obligation, i.e. paying utilities, was, was something to evaluate and think about. Okay. Uh, and then finally, um, you wanted to see proposals from interested parties. There was some conversation of, "Well, we could go out to the public and ask the public what ideas they had for the space." And what I kind of heard back was, "Hmm, we want to hear from people that want to operate the space." Like, "Who are we leasing it to? We want to hear from the person who signs on the lease, what they would do with the property. Does that still feel right?" Okay. So those are the seven assumptions that I am kind of operating from and will move forward in some of the conversation. Yes.
I'm not sure, did we cover three, the partnerships?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped partnerships. I got excited there. Partnerships. That, we did have a lot of conversation on partnerships. One of them being that I think we're going to start hearing from a lot of individual entities, groups, potential. What I heard from council last time was, "The more of those that can start forming into a larger mass about how they would use the full space, um, might be better." You know, it's 14,000 square feet. Um, the ability for it to meet multiple needs with multiple partners in one space felt like, um, like it had value to you.
On that note, um, will we be having any, uh, pre-bid conferences, um, or just spaces so that, uh, there are folks that can come, learn more about what the RFP process is? And then also, um, I know the city can't, you know, play matchmaker, although, uh, it's an opportunity to get together and just kind of know in the room which organizations are interested so that they can hopefully come together.
Yes, absolutely. That's a really important piece of a RFP process. So we did that when we did the Boulevard one. We hosted a tour of the property. As a part of the RFP process, we would absolutely be opening the space, providing tours. We, we want people to, um, bump into each other and have sort of, uh, happy, um, explosions of, "Hey, we could potentially work together on something." So if we can, um, facilitate that, that's good. So having those kinds of tours and, um, and opportunities, I think would definitely be part of the, uh, part of the process.
I, I'm thinking about Jim's last comment about, um, a sort of a development partner, someone who would bring a consortium of interests. And I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that in the 3A, that our preference is that, um, people interested in using the space would come and make a single proposal. And I'm, I'm wondering whether that's what we're thinking will be requirement or whether we would consider multiple proposals for using a portion of this. Do we want somebody to come and make a proposal for the entire 14,000 square foot building? And, and my, my, my sense is that's a decision of whether we'd operate it as a municipal space, like the Olympia Center and sublet space out, or whether we have it leased as a building. And I, so I, I'm just thinking about that.
That's a great question. We, we did, there was a little bit of a conversation about that last time, about, "Do you want to have a relationship with one tenant? Or does the city want to have a relationship potentially with multiple tenants in that building?" I will just tell you from, from my personal opinion, I hope you say one tenant. It just isn't easier to manage. I mean, we could, we can do it, obviously, but I look at examples like the farmer's market. If we had to have the relationship with all of the individual vendors inside the farmer's market, we would probably have Scott Reiver, I can feel him back there. But so, so do you want to look at a model where, where somebody can, is the convener of the partners? And they bring them together and somebody acts as sort of a lead and then maybe sublets, sublets out space? That, that could be viable. Yeah.
And again, we have a model that was very successful for 20 years and that was a family support center. They were the main tenant. They took the, the lead on doing all the subleases in the building. So it was done very well.
In this building.
In this very building.
Okay. So I think I answered three. So unless I have massively missed it, does it sound like these seven still remain from when we discussed last time? And, and does this feel synthesized correctly? Okay. Yes.
Maybe it's on a different slide. Um, but we were also interested in, um, the surrounding areas as well. And, um, looks like you're on top of it. You know what I'm talking about?
Well, well, I got, I didn't include it on this one because it didn't really ultimately rise to the, to the level to include, but it's a great question to ask. The last time we did talk about, "Do you want this parcel to go out in just by itself? Or do we want to maybe think about the whole of the city's ownership?" Because if you think about it, if I had a map, I could show you the overlay. We own a lot of property in this area, from the property that we own across the street, where the contemplated mixed-use parking structure could be at some future point, to the Olympia Center, to the Olympia Center's parking lot. Uh, we, i- i- if, but what we ultimately landed on was, "We are not going to wait to bring all of that together. Let's just get this thing off the ground." So that's why I didn't put it in because I thought we're just talking about 108 State.
How many years has it been empty?
It's been three and a half years, I think.
Or at least.
Four, something like that.
We lost COVID time.
Yeah.
So if we tried to wait until we could package it with, it'll be empty another five years. So I just really strongly advocate that we move forward with just this building at this point.
I, I would, I would advocate for that as well, but I think it's fair to ask, um, you know, respondents to an RFP, what their relationship would be to the current state of the surrounding areas.
And additionally to that, what vision, if any, they have for the city's historic town square?
And just to tie a bow on it, I don't think the thought is to, by this council, to slow down, um, activation of 108 State. Just, uh, while we're doing this process, if there is anything, and, and Mike, you'd be an expert in this, but is there anything to be mindful of? That, uh, you know, if, if we could do things differently so that, uh, we don't create any sort of issues with activating the rest of the space later on?
I think what you'd really just, you, you'd have to evaluate that as it comes in. Creating scenarios where you just need, you need good partners, um, that are thinking holistically. So I, I love the idea of adding a question to the response of, you know, "How does your proposal and your use of this building activate and align with the surrounding area, the historic sort of town square?" So I think we would just need to get information that, that the potential user is cognizant of that and thinking about it. But, um, you know, the, the building is going to be there. So it doesn't, you know, it's, it's not going anywhere. So even if something was developed adjacent or nearby, um, on city-owned property, that building will always remain. So I'm, I, I, I don't, I, I don't really have, uh, significant concerns there.
Well, the other thing I was just thinking about in terms of, you know, why it's important to start to activate at least this space is I think about this building and Hands on Children Museum. And we were very intentional to locate these buildings here to help be an anchor for, for their economic development. And that's exactly what's happened, uh, in the East Bay side, is we've seen development happen around those. So activating this space here and making a really great use out of it then potentially draws other development partners who start to see the space activated and then start to envision something else that could be, um, located there adjacent to it that's a partner use to those, to those things. So I think that's another good reason to start to activate these spaces because it opens up all that other potential for those other parcels.
Okay. So with that, last time when we did the 3900 Boulevard, we were able to synthesize all the way down into really kind of a project vision. And we're able to, um, put that out as a part of the proposal. So what I've tried to do is synthesize those seven previous into a vision statement that would go with this. So an active historic building that increases foot traffic and creates a lasting and unique destination in our downtown core. When I say active, I'm really meaning that you could, when you walk by, you could look in the windows and see movement, see activity, that there are people coming and going. By historic building, obviously, what's happening inside that building should be leveraging the exterior and history of that building. By foot traffic, um, I am really meaning that somebody walked somewhere before this, they went into this building and they are walking somewhere after. So they are moving and supporting our other businesses in our other locations as they are utilizing this space. By lasting, I'm meaning, "Will this proposal and the proposer be able to sustain this use for at least a decade? Can, can they, can they execute? Will this thing be here? Can we rely on this?" Uh, and then finally, unique destination, uh, you can't find this somewhere else in Olympia. This is going to be, so that's the, 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 what those buzzwords in there. Am I close?
Yeah, and I'm, I don't mean to word smith, so don't take it this way.
That's okay.
But when I read it, I automatically added "for everyone" after the word "destination."
Okay.
Because I think that's how active we want it. Just...
And just to play on that a little bit, um, I, actually, when I first read it, I was like, "Oh yeah, that's great." And I also recall, um, just in terms of, um, access, uh, foot traffic doesn't apply to everybody. So if there's some, if, if there's a different word we can use for, you know, all forms of mobility for those who don't get around by foot.
I think we could just say activation or activity. I hear you and I will, we will find the right term. You're welcome.
Mike, I just want to point out, that looks like a neon sign at City Hall. I know, when you said no neon, I'm like, "Wait a minute. We, we might need some neon. We'll see."
The neon sign was just an example. I don't know if neon would be allowed. We have a historic preservation officer that could help us with something like that when we get there. Okay, so if, if that feels okay, I'm going to, we're going to make some ma- minor modifications to that, but it feels like we're right. Okay. So what we do then, I feel like we've, I've gotten the right kind of feedback. We develop the RFP. What we're thinking about, if we're, if we are all on the same page, which it sounds like we are, the RFP would really be, um, there would be four areas of, uh, review criteria in that. Those areas would be proposed use, qualifications, experience and financial sustainability, business and operation plan, and the proposed transaction. So those are the four areas or four submittal requirements, um, in the request for proposals. And I'll hit on what those mean as we move through. So what I mean by proposed, um, use, the things that we would be talking about is activation. So activation, uh, frequency of use, um, or use estimates, people coming and go, estimations of people sort of coming and going, hours of operation, kinds of programming. Those are all of the kinds of things that you think about when you're, when you're getting an idea of activation. Economic impact, we are looking at, uh, tourism, employment, uh, taxes generated, entrepreneurial activity, you know, how, what's your nexus to those kinds of, of items? Uh, number three, I have comparative models. We, we would like them to be able to, you know, "What are you, what are you doing? Is somebody else doing this anywhere? Have you evaluated how this works somewhere else?" Um, and give us some examples. Alignment, um, by alignment, I really mean is, "How does your use align with the city of Olympia's values?" So, um, and our plans. So questions about diversity, equity, inclusion, climate adaptation, downtown strategy. So we can provide the content, but you need to tell us how your use aligns with some of the, the objectives of our programs and, and our values as a city as well. And then finally, the strategic value, it's really is, "How are you highlighting and capitalizing on the location and the history of this building?" I mean, just succinctly. So that's the, for review area one, proposed use. Review area number two, operation and business plan. I, I don't think we are talking about some 50-page business plan that, you know, a Harvard MBA is, is, would be doing. But if we are, um, going to enter into a tenant landlord relationship with someone for multiple decades, um, any commercial lender would have their, uh, or landlord, they'd want to make sure that their tenant, that they're creating that long of relationship has given thought to things like, um, uh, "What is your business? How are you, who are your customers? What's the market demand? How are you generating revenue to continue to cover some of your overhead expenses?" They, they would need to see those sort of things. So we could be asking questions like, "Who's the primary operator? Would you be subletting property, um, as a means of revenue generating for this site? Or would it just be a commercial service that you would be providing on-site that generates revenue for you?" Does the primary user, I mean, just one question, "Do you have a business plan?" One of the assets that we invest in is our relationship with the Economic Development Council and the Small Business Development Center. I would encourage any applicant, be it a nonprofit or a business, utilize the services that are up there to help give them some guidance on thinking about these kinds of questions. So we could refine the kinds of questions that we would ask, but really it's in that sort of vein of, "Who are you? What are you doing? How big's your market? And, and can you sustain it?" Yeah?
Mike, I'm wondering if, if in the RFP document, we could, we could point to things like the EDC assistance and, and just tools and things that we're aware of for, you know, not everyone does these proposals all the time. It'd be nice to point people in a direction. Or maybe as part of, um, if we're going to do tours of the site to have that information available on the day of tours. So just, I'm just thinking about things we can do to, to help.
Absolutely. And, and there are great resources. Um, so we can absolutely clue in. Enterprise for Equity is another one that, that could help on potential partners. So I will invite them to, uh, and ensure that they're part of the, the process and that they're accessible to respondents. Third, um, oh yeah?
Yeah, sorry. I, hi, Mike. I actually have a question, uh, sort of about like business adaptation in terms of, um, you know, I actually would be interested in knowing if they're, um, thinking about, um, you know, sort of what we just went through, uh, with COVID, for example. Do they have a, a plan for how they can adapt their business, uh, in the event of, uh, a catastrophe happening? I think is extremely important, especially listening to the points made earlier about a 100-year lease and things like that. I think it would be important for us to think about that.
That's, that's great feedback. Thank you.
What's the solicitation time of this RFP?
We have not determined that yet. So I do think it would be pretty long, to be honest with you. This is a complex response. And I think to be fair to respondents and to be accessible, we have to provide a significant amount of time for folks to get the RFP, digest it, build their team, access the resources. Um, you know, we, I've seen RFPs that have a three, four-week turnaround. I think that this is probably a six-week at a minimum.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, and it, it may even be somewhat iterative in the sense that, uh, you're going to put the RFP out and then we have, you know, the tours and Q and A opportunities. So we'll flesh that kind of thing out, but having this kind of information available to that was, is really the first step.
Okay. Um, and I hear you on, there will be more work done, although, uh, just quickly, can I ask you? I'm not sure what our sort of standard process is here at the city, um, yet. Although, uh, do we do a pre and post, uh, RFP for, for example? I mean, I think you know what I mean by that, but before, have a session, um, accessible to folks before the RFP actually launches and then to generate interest and then after it launches? For any questions?
We can, and we can do, I think the best way to do that would be an open house. So we could do an open house in the, in 108 State, um, before the launch or right as it's launched. But I do think that if we give an adequate amount of time for a response, um, those should both, I mean, it, I, I'm not too concerned there.
Okay.
Yeah, just to follow up on the questions... Yeah, just to follow up on the questions around the timeline. I think for Jay's comment around using the Small Business Development Center to work, the RFP has to be on the street long enough for someone to engage in that process. And get something out the other end. You know, and so my thought is, you know, a group of community members comes together, they need to write a business plan, or maybe they need to negotiate with the Park Foundation for a fiscal agency or some other partnership thing that might be complex beyond just the development of the property. To me, that says, go longer, six to eight weeks or, and I know that messes with your overall timeline, but it's really important, I think.
We will, we will, we will put this on the Gantt chart and really sort of figure out just how long this something like this realistically would need. And part of that feedback is gonna come from when we bring our, our review and development team together. And I've got city staff, and I've got partners from lending backgrounds and partners from the Center for Business and Innovation, that they can give us feedback as to realistically, this is how long it takes to obtain some of this information.
So I'm thinking about your description of this business plan, and you talked about a commercial enterprise that might bring in cash. So I'm trying to understand, we'd had some conversation in, over the years of talking about this, about the possibility of like a hospitality business that, that might be in there that would draw more folks in and help cover the costs of the space. So would we be imagining that the historic or art or the nonprofit group would be making part of their submission describing what kind of subletting they would imagine doing? And I'm also just thinking about a much bigger tenant improvement, if you have a business like that.
It's a great question. So let's use when Family Support Center was in there as an example. So let's say Family Support Center comes back and they want to respond to this. Now, I know that they're not going to because they have a beautiful space on the West Side, but that's what makes it a good example to use. If, if the Family Support Center came and said, we're responding, and here's our business plan. Well, I think you'd be looking at is, you know, what is the makeup of your sort of nonprofit? What's your mission? What do you do? And then if your model on using this is, we're gonna sublease, we're gonna sublet space out, we have some idea as to what we would charge for that space that we would have, and that revenue would offset some of these costs, like the utility payments or maintenance expenses or building reserves. That's kind of what I'm thinking is. Your business, your operations plan or business plan may include thinking of yourself as generating revenue by subletting space. But we would want to know that you've given that some thought and that if you're talking to partners about subletting space, that they're real and that they would be willing to make those kinds of commitments to do it as well.
How many more slides? Because we're running a little.
One, one more.
Okay. Because I got a lot to say.
I'm sorry, two more. Review criteria, really looking at, the question that we really are asking here is, how will the city move forward with confidence that this proposer will be able to execute? Statement of relevant or previous experience? And that can be, from a nonprofit standpoint, that's, who's your board? What's their background? What's the experience that you have? If you're a business, who's your operator? Who's your key staff? What sort of experience do they have? Some sort of statement of financial ability to borrow if that's needed. So what we, and we asked for this during the 3900 Boulevard. There was a letter that needed to be provided. Do you have a relationship, do you have a commercial lending relationship? If you're gonna raise your hand, you're gonna go to a bank, and you're gonna borrow money, show it to us, is really kind of what we did with Boulevard. This is similar. The building's gonna need tenant improvements, and it's going to need work, and it's going to, where, and where do those relationships live for you? So something in that kind of a space. Also, who's ever in there is going to need to obtain insurance. Even if we're the landlord, you have to, you have to have liability insurance. Can you obtain that? Do you have the right status to be able to attain that? Can you pay for that? Those are questions from a compliance standpoint. Can you be a compliant tenant if we're your landlord? That's kind of where that question comes in. And then finally, the last review criteria is criteria number four. What will be required of the proposer and the city in a transaction to make this project a reality? So we want them to give some thought. Are you talking about a 10-year lease with the city? Are you talking about a 20-year lease with the city? If you are going to articulate a discounted rent, what community benefits specifically are you providing to be able to justify that significantly discounted rent? If you can't articulate a community benefit, how much are you gonna pay us? What's the, what's the rent gonna be? Where do, where would you think the maintenance responsibilities would go and to what degree? If you were thinking about a tenant improvement allowance, if somebody's paying top dollar for rent over a long period of a lease, they're going to expect a certain degree of tenant allowance. If they're not paying anything for rent, I don't know too many instances where they also get a tenant allowance. So there's a balance there. Who pays for utilities, leasehold excise tax assessments, things like that nature? We call those triple nets. So who pays those? Again, the city prefers a lease, strongly prefers a lease. But if a purchase is proposed, the respondent will need to make their case as to why it is a more beneficial transaction to the city, because it's gonna allow them to execute in a way that gives us what we're hoping for. That's it.
Additional questions for Mike?
Just one comment, that when we market it, we do it as a city hall and fire station. Because I think having both uses in people's mind historically helps them think about what it could be in the future.
Okay.
And the spaces lend themselves that way, right? Because the upstairs is less, you know, accessible to the public. It's kind of where the business gets done upstairs, and then all the public space is downstairs. Well, as many of you know, this has been top of mind for me for many, many years. You probably are sick of hearing me say that the City of Olympia doesn't have a history museum. It does, it's a big old house, but, but not a type of museum that is in our core where, you know, it's a lot of tourist, you know, attraction there. But yeah, so Lacey has a history museum, and I'm older than Lacey. So, I still get some laughs. And so, you know, I really, really feel that where we are right now with what we've all agreed, you know, we want it to be, that kind of use of a gathering spot, a very active place for art and history to combine together is, you know, kind of where my emphasis is. You know, this vision of a welcoming community center, it's a place for programs, projects, learning and discovery. I think, just kind of fleshing out what I've already heard, that fits. We want to drive this business activity and support our growing residential community downtown. I forwarded, I think it was in a New York Times article I sent you about downtowns are not coming back, which was the headline, so of course I clicked on it. And what they were talking about is that the downtowns of, yes, before COVID are not coming back. We're not gonna have huge towers full of employees, you know, we're not going to have the office space centers, you know, even with our state, you know, Capitol employees, a lot of them are not going to be coming back. So we have to reinvent what downtown means to us. And this article was talking about, it needs to be a gathering place for entertainment, for tourists. It needs to be a place for entertainment for people that live in the downtowns, because now we're gonna have all these residential, you know, buildings with people living downtown. They want something to do. So, that and, you know, we have lots of stories to tell about our city and our inhabitants. And, you know, I think one of our first exhibitions there could include a city council timeline where all of your bios are sitting there. I'm just kidding. I'm just trying to sell it to the, you know, the politician side of you.
I hope the first exhibit is pre-City of Olympia, to be totally honest.
Well, yes, yes. I mean, definitely bringing in the first people and, you know, all the things that our tribal ancestors, you know, were, were here to share. That's obviously gonna be a big part of it, but also a maritime history, right? We've got some folks here that are pretty involved in that. And so, the only other thing I would like to add is, to my wishlist, is we need a monitored public restroom downtown. Where somebody like grandma comes down with her grandchildren and she feels comfortable, she doesn't have to go into a store and beg to use the bathroom in, you know, at the spa. She can walk in, there's a clean, safe restroom for her to use, and a visitor's center. We haven't had a viable visitor's center, really, forever. And now the Capitol Museum or the Capitol Visitor Center is closed. There's no place for tourists to come in town and have a one-stop shop to understand what we have going on here and how to get around. And I know we are all on our phones and all the apps, but we can build an app for our visitor's center, but we need somebody to take that on. So I think the space where the original, or the entrance was for the Family Support Center would be a perfect spot for a visitor's center, right on our, what do we call it? Our capital-to-market connection point, maybe with a little neon sign. But, you know, I just think it really, really lends itself as complementary to the use of it as a, as a history center, too. Yeah?
Mayor, I think that, very well stated. And I also think that through my conversations and then our last one at a study session or work group is that I think the council is aligned in what you had just said. And I wonder, my question is for councilmates, is there anything that was discussed so far that you feel like was amiss, causes you any heartburn, is different from what you're envisioning? You know, the ideal of that activated space to look like?
Jim?
I think, just, just my quick response, I agree with the comments the mayor just made, though, having sat through two studies of downtown restrooms that haven't been implemented, and the monitoring being the key word to success there, I worry about us opening, or us owning one facility and that just not being adequate. Like, it's.
It's better than zero.
We need a plan for that as well.
Absolutely, but we don't have any right now.
That's all I want to do is add to that.
Okay, thank you.
And I did give you a bumper sticker, you can't crap in an app.
Oh, hashtag. Okay, on that note, I think we're going to, I think we've given Mike everything he needs and more. Awesome sauce, and, oh Danny?
Just so those aren't the last words that we end on over there. I actually really want to congratulate Mike on a really, really excellent presentation. I see that you've carried forward the conversations that we've already had onto this. It feels really cohesive, and I just feel like there's a lot of faith from, from all of us in the process that you are about to lead on our behalf, and I just really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you. You guys, that was very helpful, actually. There's clear direction, and with clear direction, we can get you what you're looking for.
Wonderful. Well, we have a second presentation to get to. We're gonna take a five-minute comfort break and reconvene at, at 7:10. Thank you. All right, I just want to give a heads up to Thurston Community Media that we are gonna go back live again. Are they, can you see, are they?
We got thumbs up.
Excellent, okay. So if you are just joining us, we are reconvening our work session of February 28th, 2023. We just covered a briefing and discussion around requests for proposals for a city-owned property at 108 State Avenue. And now we are moving on to discussion regarding a feasibility study for our aquatic center that we all hope to have someday. And I'll turn it over to Paul Simmons, our Olympia Parks Arts and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. And once again, for the record, I'm Paul Simmons, the Parks Arts and Recreation Director, and Councilmember Cooper, I'm hoping, also for a colorful bumper sticker after this presentation as well. Maybe, maybe don't poo in the poo or something like that, I don't know. So, anyways, with me tonight, with me tonight, as we move on, move on and. With me tonight, to help with the presentation, I also have Scott Reiver, who's the Director of Recreation and Facilities. And then we have Sam, Deputy Chief Sam Costello, representing the Police Department. And then Brian Windrope, the Executive Director of Senior Services of South Sound with us. And then I also want to also acknowledge Tammy Ledoux and the audience over here. So many times, we make these presentations, and there are many people behind the scenes that do quite a bit of work to get us to this point, and they're not always in the audience. So when she's here, I'd like to acknowledge her, because our department would not be where it is without her. So, thank you, Tammy. So tonight, I'll provide you an update. We were here last March, if you recall, to talk about the aquatic feasibility study. And I'd like to catch you up on things that have occurred or not occurred since that time, and possibly a little bit of expanded scope that we are talking about. So before we do that, I thought I'd jump into a little bit of a recap, just so that everyone's aware. So we launched our aquatic feasibility study in 2020. We actually signed the contract with a consultant in February. So we went into COVID right after that, and the project was delayed quite a bit. And then we had to figure out, how do we do a public process virtually? And luckily, our consultants were really great to work with. We had a very active stakeholder group. We had really active public participation in our large group meeting. And there was generally a lot of enthusiasm for the project throughout the feasibility study. The stakeholder group was, had all three cities participate in the area of the Tumwater, Lacey, Olympia. All three school districts had representatives. Evergreen was represented, represented, the Park Foundation, the YMCA. We had a vast group that continued to grow as we went through the project. And really, they were very engaged in the process. They had, it was probably, I don't know, eight to 10 meetings over the course of the project, and they really informed and improved the work that came out in the end product. We completed the study in November of 2021, presented to PrAC in January of '22, and you all in March of '22. And then this presentation that I'm sharing with you now, we also shared with the same stakeholder group in January, as well as PrAC at their last meeting on January 19th, at least. So again, what the aquatic study did was a full market analysis as it relates to aquatic facilities and what's available in the area. It did a survey of aquatics needs. We had a really good participation. I believe we had close to 1,000 people that participated in that survey. It was distributed in all three cities. As I said, we had everyone participating. We took a look at, you know, do we build multiple smaller pools? Or do we look at one? And at the end of the day, the conclusion from the group and the study and the analysis was that it's much more cost efficient to build one larger regional facility. You're building one parking lot, one set of locker rooms. The infrastructure that's needed to support it is much less by having one larger regional site than, rather than having multiple locations. We also, when the study was completed, we had a vision for the facility. We did a full business plan and looked at ongoing operational costs, including expenses, revenue, and what the subsidy would look like. For the record, pools are very expensive to build, and they're also expensive to maintain. So it is a public facility, in most cases, operate, that operates with a subsidy that's required. And for those that want to dive into the full study, it's available on EngageOlympia.com still, and folks can go to the project. full study, it's available on EngageOlympia.com still, and folks can go to the project page, and there's the full analysis there, as well as a really cool virtual video where you could walk through what the facility would look like. Here's just an overview of what the results were, of the need and the type of facility that we would look to build. When we were done, it had two different swim tanks. On the left side, you see the lap pool, which was designed to potentially be expanded into more of a competitive swim space. And then on the right, we had the recreational pool. We also had, I did say only one set of locker room, but there's actually two sets of locker rooms. There's some that would be your traditional men's and women's locker room. And then we also have family or gender-neutral locker rooms as well that were incorporated into the design of the facility. Here are some pictures to bring those to life so that you could see the type of aquatic facility that we were talking about. And so where we left off when I last talked to you last March was, our hope was to go out and solidify partnerships with the groups who had been participating in the feasibility study. And then if we were able to garner a solid partnership, then we would move into site selection based on those partnerships. And then based on those partnerships, develop a financial strategy and a governance agreement. The challenge was, when we finished the feasibility study and it was time for agencies to commit, we had a hard time bringing really anyone back to the table. And so we had a lot of enthusiasm, and we had a lot of excitement, but we really haven't received any formal interest from the partners, other than the fact that they participated in the feasibility study. Nobody's came forward, not because we haven't asked them, but we just haven't received that. So because of that, we didn't move forward with the next steps because those were all based on those things. So after, you know, when I presented to you all last March and coming off of the feasibility study, there was a really good general sense of momentum, particularly here in Olympia. And so my concern, month over month, as we were hearing crickets, was we've got to rethink this. If we want to continue to move this forward and make sure this doesn't just end up as another plan on a shelf, we've got to think about, okay, if we can't go forward in the sense of the partnerships that we envisioned in the feasibility study, how could we rethink this whole project so that maybe we look at a different way to move forward? And then also, things changed over those months, too, when we talked about the property swap with the Olympia School District and the Yelm Highway property, and I'll explain how that fits into this discussion. When I was putting together my thoughts on how to present this slide, it dawned on me that I should have started with number two as number one. So I'm going to jump around a little bit and talk about the partnerships first. So the reason we did this aquatic study, so when we adopted our 2016 Parks Arts and Recreation Plan, we actually had in the draft before it was approved, in the out years of the draft, so it was, you know, after the life of that plan, but in a future one, a feasibility analysis where we would look to replace the Olympia Center and consider an aquatic facility as part of that project. We recognized that the Olympia Center, while we maximize what it is today, it's not designed like we would design a modern community center and by today's needs. And Scott will talk a little bit about that. And so we knew that was a need that was coming up, not urgent, not emerging back in 2016, but it was in the out years. And when we were adopting that plan, and I think Mayor Selby and Councilmember Cooper were on council at the time, many swim advocates showed up to council and advocated that we needed a pool, and there was a larger sense of urgency. And so the council at the time made an amendment to the plan before final adoption that pulled the aquatics part out of it and moved it up into the current years, which is what led to us doing the aquatics feasibility study in 2020. So we moved forward with that, and then we performed the aquatic study. And now what I'm proposing as a part of the evolution is that we go back to that initial 2016 plan, and maybe we should marry back the Olympia Center and replacement of that with the Aquatic Center, being that we don't have other regional partners to come forward. So that's a little bit of the genesis of how the Olympia Center connects. It's not totally out of the blue, has been talked about, but just the way that things kind of all laid out over time, this is where we are. The Olympia Center is connected to the Senior Center. The Olympia Center was built in large part because of that partnership and with the support of Senior Services of South Sound. And so you really can't talk about replacing one without the other. And Brian will talk more about that here in a little bit. And then also, one of the trends we're seeing, particularly at the national level, is that community centers are becoming more than community centers. And community hubs is a term that I've heard at a lot of our national conferences. And it's about where you have a recreation center or a community center that's not just for recreation. How can it become more globally, community-serving? And so that's where the idea, I've heard over the years, that the Police Department has struggled to find a good West Side presence and a spot to have it. And so as we were talking about other facilities, this concept of, oh, gosh, maybe on this West Side property, we could look at building an aquatic center, replacing the Olympia Center, replacing the Senior Center, and then also could potentially a police substation fit in there. And both Chief Allen and his staff were excited about the concept. And so we kind of continued to talk about those things, and they'll share more about those things. So as we looked at this larger campus, rather than just an aquatic facility, then we started asking ourselves, okay, well, which properties that we currently own, could you fit this type of a campus on? And the answer is, we don't have any. But with the deal that is being worked on with the Olympia School District to swap properties, this 27-acre property could potentially meet that need and accommodate all of those uses. And so
Paul, if there's questions, can you take questions as you go?
Sure.
Okay. Did you have something, Dante?
So when you're referring to the West Side property, are you talking about the parcel that is Harrison and Kaiser?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'll get to that in just one quick second. So I just wanted to highlight that really the basis of this proposal, and we'll go back to this at the end, is to work with Barker-Winker CCAT, who was the consultant that did the aquatics facility feasibility study. And they do more than aquatics. They look at community centers and do feasibility studies and architecture design across the country, and blend all of these concepts into that. So talking about the West Side property, so for those that aren't familiar, and I apologize, I should have done a larger map that shows where this is at in the region. It hit me when I was sitting over there watching Mike's presentation, and I saw the nice map of downtown that showed the location. So I'll just graphically, this is Harrison Avenue, this is Kaiser Road, this is Seventh Avenue. If you go down it, you'll get to Capital Medical Center, and Yager Park is over here. It is on the West Side quite a bit. The one thing I will say is that there's plans for the on-ramp from 101 that would extend there, which probably, if this were to move forward, by the time we were building this facility, the on-ramp would be there, which would really help with folks that maybe are coming from other parts of the community other than the West Side. And so this is the property. It's largely flat. There's gentle slopes. There's access from three different arterials, and there's lots of potential. It's probably the only, or it is the only property that we have that is available for probably this type of facility. So if we weren't going to use this, we would need to look to acquire a property which would increase the size. One of the other things that we particularly liked about this property is that it's also in what we would determine in a high-needs area. When we submit our state RCO grants, we actually have to pull up the census block for where the park that the improvement is located is, and they have all of these data sets. And so we pulled these from the census block. And as you can see, the median household income is almost half of the state average. The disabled population is nearly double the state average, and the mortality rate is also significantly higher by almost a third of the state average. And so again, this is an area, when you look at the census demographics, there's also a lot of multifamily housing and high-density housing, particularly around the Yager Park area as well. And so we think that this is an area that could use investment and is in a high area of need for community members.
Paul, can I ask
Yeah.
what area you're talking about for that demographic?
Yeah, it's the census tract that this property is located in. And I can send out a map of that, too, if council's interested in that, to see what the boundaries are. So with that, I'm going to transition over to Scott and the other folks to kind of talk through the, kind of the different elements of this potential expansion.
Paul, real quick, oh, maybe you're going to talk about what would happen to the old Olympia Center in this process? Because it's our only public restroom facility I just found out.
Yeah, we can talk about that as well, for sure.
Thanks, Paul. Again, Scott Reiver, Director of Recreation and Facilities with the Parks Arts and Recreation Department. So as you, we'll each have three slides. And one thing that I want to be really clear with here is that this is not a complaint about the Olympia Center. There's some realities that we deal with because it's an aging 35-year-old facility that we're trying to accommodate today's needs in. But I just, I want to be really clear that our, the City of Olympia, for a facility this age, and I've been in many community centers or similar-type facilities that were built either at the same time or even within a decade since, this facility is well-maintained and it's in good condition. Now that said, it's not perfect for what we try to do or what our users are trying to do in it. So currently, you know, we obviously host a lot of recreation programs. We host Senior Services for South Sound as a tenant. That was one of the reasons the facility was built. And then sort of the third angle for the facility is community meeting space, whether that's a board meeting or a retirement or wedding function. They can be formal, they can be very informal uses. Our parking is compromised down there. It's always been compromised. I've been with the city since '99, and we have had parking challenges. We have two lots, not including the small lot that serves our oldest seniors that's onsite. But since development has occurred in and around the area, it has really increased both commercial and residential use of our parking lots, to the point that we are funding a halftime parking services position, just to try to keep people from camping in their, from adjacent residential facilities, to be honest. The facility was built in mid-'80s. Technological needs have changed since then. We've done some things, but it definitely feels a little bit like putting lipstick on a pig. There's only so much you can do without really gutting the place and kind of starting over. And our design, if we were to design this facility with what we know now about SEPTED and just general access, we wouldn't design it this way. It creates security issues for our staff and for our visitors. So what excites us about a potential change? Oh, yes, sorry.
No, that's all right. I think this is a great opportunity for community members to also learn along with us. Could you tell us about SEPTED and your, sort of, the environmental design of it and the safety?
I can't, but Sam probably can.
So I'm going to give you the 30-second version. I'm sure that maybe most of you know of it already, but it is essentially designing spaces in order to be safer. And so in some instances, I'll give you an example, it may be bushes in front of a window, or bushes very close to a house where someone could hide, or in circumstances that are probably more Olympia-esque, bushes are spaces that are near businesses or residences that would allow for someone to potentially set up a campsite or sit and wait for a door to be open at a certain time of night when you were closing, or something like that. So it's designing the environment of a building or a space to effectively prevent crime by not allowing people that might commit it to be as easily there without being seen by others.
Thank you, Deputy Officer Costello. And this is, I believe, a free assessment that the city offers to all commercial and just other organizations. Isn't that correct?
That's true. Our Neighborhood Policing Division does that on a regular basis. So members of the public and business community in Olympia can call the Police Department, and we will send folks out that are certified in SEPTED or Crime Prevention through Environmental Design. And they'll do an assessment on the property to make some, or recommend changes that you can make easy to very difficult, that would improve the safety of the environment just through some minor changes up to really major changes. But we do do that, yes.
Can I throw a couple examples, too, that just are very specific to this facility? One is that there's five different entrances into this building. So that's one thing that is, while we can lock doors and try and funnel access through one door, that doesn't stop somebody from pushing a crash bar and somebody else coming into the building. And when we have programs that go into the, you know, as late as nine o'clock at night, and they're, you know, maybe in the back gym or up in the ceramics, it's easy for folks to get into different parts of the facility, and we may or may not know. And same thing, our maintenance staff are there working on things. And so when we talk about safety and managing access, you know, we do what we can, and definitely OPD has helped us there. But from a design perspective, those are the types of things that we would do differently with a more modern facility.
Just the last thing that I'll add real quick is that I've also noticed that with that, aside from the safety aspect of it, is having so many entrances causes confusion. And I feel like every time, almost every time I'm in there, somebody will come in and not know where they are, and then they'll turn around and leave.
I'm not going to disagree with you. Not only is it awkwardly designed for all of the safety and security purposes, but just usability, there are, the example I love to give is that we have our most formal multipurpose room that hosts brides adjacent to our garbage cans outside. That's how you enter that room. Like, that's just one example of poor design. And there's very limited parking into that space. So it's almost like the building should have been picked up and turned 180 degrees. So in the future, what excites us about this is, you know, some dedicated and active spaces for our recreation activities. And along with that is the fact that we almost are in competition with Senior Services for South Sound for space now, particularly during the daytime, when most of their programming. But it's not exclusive to the daytime anymore. Especially pre-COVID, they had started to expand into evenings. It's slowed down. Brian can probably talk to you about how quickly that might come back. But there's definitely pressure points there between senior services, recreation, and then just general meeting space. We need dedicated parking that meets the expectation of our building users. When you come to an activity center, whether it's for lunch for seniors or for a public meeting, a large-scale public meeting, you expect to be able to find parking somewhere nearby, and that's a challenge right now. Current technology, I've talked about that already. The need for proper storage for our recreation and maintenance equipment, you would be floored at how we have MacGyvered storage in that facility to get the things that we need accessible for both our maintenance staff and our recreation staff. And then, of course, you know, a modern design that supports the safety and security for our employees and our visitors. So how can we better serve our community? I talked about the dedicated space, and I want to be really clear, there is a really cool synergy that takes place at the Olympia Center when we have when we have preschool classes coming past senior programs and having the general public also coming through there. It's super cool. There's, there's a great, um, intent to actually do multi-generational programming. I have not found that to be super successful on, on a, on a constant basis. I think there are opportunities, but I think where the value clearly is, is where they coexist and they kind of go into their own spaces and then they come back out and they coexist again. And those interactions are some of the most special interactions that you see. So we would not want to lose that with a new design. We would want to find a way to allow senior programs, recreation programs, to be able to know that they have their space, but to also be able to integrate as they go through the building. Brian might disagree with me, which is fine. Let's see, potential for partnerships with, with OPD. I mean, we're not in the same facility right now. So are there ways to, um, integrate our programming with, uh, either their programming or just their staffing levels and making people feel more comfortable interacting with an officer when they, when they pass, um, through a facility and, and they're there? And it's, it's not that the only time they see an officer is because something bad is happening. Uh, and, and really normalize that. And then finally improving the potential for our, our open indoor event space that, that can be used for the general public. So again, I go back to our multipurpose room. Our multipurpose room is unusable weekdays because that is where Senior Services hosts daily nutrition programs. So nobody can use that space because of the setup and the takedown time that, that, that takes place in there. So is there a way to design space where the nutrition needs can be met? But we can also host, you know, larger sessions that maybe have a breakout. I will be really honest. One thing we don't know about is how much of a return we will get, uh, to those community meeting needs. There's definitely been a slow return since the pandemic because a lot of people have found other ways to meet. A soccer board might not choose to meet in person very frequently anymore because they can put their dinner on the stove, jump on a Zoom meeting for thirty or sixty minutes and get off that meeting and eat with their family instead of thirty minutes in, an hour or so together, and then thirty minutes back out. So, uh, that's something that remains to be seen.
Okay. Well, I'd like to start, introduce myself, I guess, for the record on, on audio. Brian Windrope, Executive Director with Senior Services for South Sound. Uh, it's good to see you all. I appreciate the chance to be here today. And I want to start by, uh, saying publicly that I've really appreciated the communication and collaboration that I've had from Paul, Scott, in particular, and Jay. We've had conversations about this. It's felt really good. And I've had the chance to speak with my board, um, about this, just as a topic, generically, because that's where we're at. And so when I speak with you today, I'm speaking on behalf of my entire board. They were unanimous in what I'm gonna share with you. So our current situation is that we're celebrating our fiftieth anniversary this year. That's fantastic. Yes, yes, applause. Nineteen seventy-three, so we, we like to say that we are almost as ourselves a senior organization now, right? And, and, uh, not that I care, but I'm fifty-four, so I'm not quite a senior. So I might become a senior when the organization becomes a senior. Anyway, so we're celebrating that all year this year. As was mentioned earlier, seniors and senior services were certainly involved in the, in the funding for the Olympia Center. We know that. And that, uh, the community of seniors, um, you know, is just growing so much. I mean, I can't, I wasn't here then, but some of you were. You know, the number of seniors that were living within reach, say, of downtown was X in nineteen seventy-three when we started. You know, and maybe Y in nineteen eighty-three, but it's, it's all the way back up to C or D if you're going linearly through the alphabet. So the number of seniors is large and it's growing. I mean, from where I go to work every day at the Olympia Center, there's buildings, you know, as you know, going up all around. This is not dedicated senior housing, but who can afford to live in places, it's often older folks, um, who have that income. So the senior community downtown has been, um, growing tremendously and so we experience that. The kitchen, that's Sandy, by the way. She is a fantastic person. Uh, she is one of our kitchen staff. She's an assistant site manager for us. Hi Sandy. And the Olympia Kitchen produces, uh, over a thousand meals a week, uh, about twelve-hundred, thirteen-hundred meals a week. And to do that out of that small kitchen space is extraordinary. I think, uh, Scott mentioned MacGyvering for the storage of, of things, but there's no MacGyvering like MacGyvering, the, the freezer space needed and the refrigerator space needed and the food prep space needed to produce that much food, uh, both hot food and frozen meals for Meals on Wheels in that space. So, um, it's just tight. And I would echo something Scott said earlier, that from a senior serving point of view, it's a, there's many ways it's a fantastic space. It's a, it really is a fantastic space. We're so blessed and fortunate to have the Olympia Center and be able to use it the way we do. And we don't want to lose sight of that. But, so this list of things isn't to say that, that we don't, uh, love being there and doesn't meet a lot of needs, but there are things that challenge us, as, as they were saying from a parks' point of view. So parking safety concerns, I would elaborate, uh, on that, that I park in Percival Landing every day. And not only is it tight parking, but I often can't park there. Like when I come, if I have a, a meeting on Zoom in the morning and I come to work, if I get to the landing, Percival Landing, it's say ten o'clock in the morning, I'm circling the block looking for some other place to park. We had one of our transportation drivers, we have a transportation program that transports seniors to medical appointments that they can't get to otherwise, where dial-a-lift doesn't go. Uh, often to cancer treatment appointments in Seattle. So Olympia residents who, um, need that transportation, seniors. Anyway, one of our drivers, who's a volunteer, parked his car at Percival Landing in the morning early to get into a senior services vehicle to, to transport the senior. Parked his car, I think it was at six AM, and when he came back, his catalytic converter had been stolen out of the Percival Landing lot, which, you know, it happens all over town, right? So there's, stories like that get around though. So people are, it's busy and it's also doesn't feel as safe to people as they would like it to feel. Parking's really tight. And we experience, the current situation is that we, we pull seniors into the Olympia Center and it's so beautiful. I mean, just yesterday, the lobby was filled with cribbage players and people showing up for classes and I was just mingling, talking. There was a guy there from Tacoma who used to live in Olympia, still has friends. So he comes down from Tacoma to come to the Olympia Center to see his friends and play. It's a really vibrant place, especially becoming more that way now that we're getting further past COVID. And yet it is, there are seniors who don't feel comfortable coming to the Olympia Center because of either access issues or safety concerns. There's seniors who will go to other senior centers regionally, uh, because of those concerns. So it's, it's challenging. So we have a new strategic plan as an organization. Uh, we adopted it this last year. And geographic expansion, um, is a priority for us. We want to not expect seniors necessarily just to come to where we are now, but do a better job of meeting them where they are. And so we are really excited about the possibility of expansion, geographic expansion for our service of seniors in Olympia. And so the idea of a West Side location is fantastic to us, the prospect of that. It's a growing part of the community. You know better than I do. Lots of people live there. And so we, I, we've, we are delighted, uh, at the prospect of this. And in the design of that, as Paul, uh, knows better than I, there would, it would be a modern facility. So we would, to the extent that we're involved in this process, we would advocate for it having a, a modern commercial kitchen with adequate space to do the meal preparations that need to happen and all the other things that happen. And, uh, the third bullet is that Senior Services is excited about mission expansion, but not exchange. Uh, we don't believe that the city of Olympia wants to not serve seniors downtown that are here now and the growing population of seniors. And we recognize that some of our most vulnerable seniors actually live downtown because of housing that exists nearby. And so that's, that's the dilemma that Senior Services is in. And I've been very clear about that with Paul and with Jay, and I want to show that tonight, that my board has, um, been clear about this with me, that we're interested in an expansion of our mission, West Side and Downtown, not in exchange for West Side and Downtown, because we don't think that's serving seniors downtown or East Olympia, right? We, going out to the West Side doesn't, doesn't help those people. And I've already spoken to that first bullet, um, and I think the second, and I think the third. So, um, yes, I think that's our last slide.
I think I know everyone in the room. Sam Costello, Deputy Police Chief of Operations for the Police Department. And I'll talk a little bit about the West Side needs for the Police Department, um, kind of where we're at. Same sort of setup as we had, uh, with the other two presenters. Uh, the first thing I'll say is that we were super excited as well to be asked to be a part of consideration of this facility for a variety of reasons. I'll go through some of them. But it, it excites us to be invited to the party a little bit. So we've always been on the West Side. Uh, I've been here for twenty-five years. We've been on the West Side in one format or another for most of that time, with the exception of a very short time after the, um, most of us know where that brick kind of X fire station near the park was. So, uh, shortly after that, we had, we were gone for a little while. And then we picked up, um, the second story of a office building that's very nearby that location. And many people don't know where it is because it doesn't have any public-facing front, uh, which is one of our issues. And so we've been up there for quite some time, mostly traffic and specialty divisions and then sort of, um, a minor version of our patrol division will be up there. So the, the officers that are assigned to the West Side will use that, um, to, to write reports and things like that. We'll talk a little bit about the logistics of that and the reasons for that, um, ha- the need to have something like that up there shortly. So the facility that we have up there right now, um, it's, it's too small. It's upstairs, uh, doesn't have anything that faces the public. It's very difficult for us to, to serve needs up there. And essentially what we're doing is housing programs, which, um, is fine on the face of things, but it's not what we intend to do. It's not what we want to do. It's not our mission. Um, it, it doesn't allow us to do the things that we value, like building trust and relationships and interacting in non-enforcement ways with the public. And so we're looking for a different solution that both meets the needs that we have up there right now as well as enhances our services up there by creating opportunities for us to engage with people in non-enforcement ways. And what we're proposing at the Aquatic Center is something like that. So we have the same, I think we can spare the big, long description of the parking. Uh, if we can all kind of, I think everyone knows where the, the office that I'm talking about is. The, the parking is extraordinarily limited in that parking, in that area. Which is okay for now for us in that not many people come there and there's parking enough for our needs. But if we were having the public come, it would be very difficult, so. Um, there is not a location in that facility for any sort of public meeting or any, anything like that. So block watch, volunteers, neighborhood meetings, things that we would traditionally like to run in the Police Department, programming that we would like to have, we can't run out of that, that side of town. So, and we're frankly a little limited down here as well, so. So it's not a surprise to any of you that we have grown quite a bit. A lot of the growth that you see, the twenty full-time employees or crew, crisis response and alternative responses, that will no doubt continue to be so, the growth of that program. Right now, it's housed out of the West Side, um, office space. I don't know that that's ideal, but it is where it is right now. And so it takes up some space. We also run some specialty units like neighborhood policing out of the West Side office space. We'd like to, as we expand back to our full size, um, the Metro Division would, would potentially go to that space as well. It historically has been up there, just for space purposes. Everybody else has stated, and I, and I guess I'll just briefly touch on, there is a ton of multi-housing on the West Side, both existing and newly built and, and in, in process. That is a high draw for us as far as police and law enforcement services, um, of all kinds. Our social service-type crew responses, um, as well as our police officers' responses. The more people you get in tight spaces, the more times we have disagreements and the need for the police to show up. So the draw on the West Side, it's the only area of the city where there's, we, we divide into five areas, A, B, C, and D. A, A is the only, that's the West Side of Olympia. It's the only district in Olympia that has two different subsections. There's the Adam South and the Adam North. So it's big enough and has enough draw that we, we traditionally have two officers up there at a time instead of the, the one that goes in every other district. So there is a draw up there and there's some reasons for it. It is where most of the retail, if you think about the big retail that is in Olympia, the draw is right there. Capitol Mall, um, anything that is close to what could be described as a box store, a lot of it is right up there in that, that area. That creates another need for police presence in that area. We get, it's, it's a draw, um, and, and so we like to have people up there. It's not just us. It's, we all know that both downtown and all parts of Olympia are the draw for Shelton and Aberdeen and Centralia and people that are coming to, to town or coming to Olympia. And, um, a lot of the times that's West Olympia. And so it, we have the need to police that as well and the need for a presence up there, so. We'd also like, and I think I mentioned, um, we'd like to have a public-facing facility on the West Side in that we would like to be able to do the vast majority of the things that we can do at the main station up there so that people don't have to come downtown and, you know, their perception or otherwise, we don't want people to not engage with the Police Department or be able to meet their needs because of logistical reasons or their inability or unwillingness or whatever it may be to come downtown. So a West Side presence with a, with a public-facing front is something that we're very interested in. And then both the, the facilities that would be developed for the Parks Department as well as our own, we would have access to training space and then the community space that we need in order to run the program that we discussed before. So it would be sort of a multi-use thing. So one of the things that happens with first responders, both Fire Department and the Police Department, is that we ha- we tend to get out on islands a little bit because we have twenty-four-hour services and we, this isn't gonna be a secret, sometimes we have our own culture. And so our interaction and ability or willingness to interface a lot of times with other city departments isn't as strong as it is, um, in other parts of the city. The chief's vision and our vision as a leadership team is to sort of turn back to be a better partner with the rest of the city in a variety of different ways. And in this vein, it is, how can we build a place where people will come and have an interaction with a police officer that is not entirely enforcement-based? In fact, hopefully not at all enforcement-based, um, in an environment where they are there for recreation. So it's a positive experience and hopefully we can enhance that positive experience by having an interaction with them that doesn't have anything to do with being the police. It just has to do with being a part of the community. That's what we're hoping for and I think this is a perfect opportunity for us. But it also kind of piles a bunch of city services into one place, which is convenient for folks. Geographically, I know it sounds like it's way out of the way. When we started looking at this and thinking about, from our needs perspective, we're talking about freeway on-ramps and off-ramps right there. Whether they put in the, the, the one that's going in or not, there's a, there's an on-ramp and an off-ramp right there now. And so as we annex the southeast, our ability to get from one side of the city to the other is going to increase. It's not gonna decrease. And going through town to try to get to that far reach of Yelm Highway and Boulevard, it's gonna be difficult. And so the more opportunity we give ourselves to be near freeways rather than trying to get through town at speed, it's gonna be safer for everybody involved. Obviously, I mentioned, um, the retail, there's parks all over the West Side, neighborhoods, uh, multi-housing up on the West Side, all draws from the police. We talk about natural disaster. None of us want to think about that. We have two bridges going to the West Side, three if you count 101. If one or all of those bridges go down, the need for us to have the best shot at having emergency services already up on the West Side is always a good thing. And so we try to keep our resources up there so that the cars that go west stay west. And because we don't want to have that, we'd like to have some presence up there in the event that something goes wrong up there. And, and so having a presence up there, physical presence in a building would be good. Um, and then we talked about the last one, and that's just allowing people to do the business that they would do here up there, so.
All right. Question?
We have five minutes. I just want to do a time check. Just kidding. We were trying to be done by eight, so I'm just, not, not directed, I'm just, this for the room, not directed to you.
She's not kidding. But yeah, I got you. Thank you for keeping us on track. Perhaps more later then, um, but, uh, I really appreciate, um, all of the points that you made, uh, Brian, for senior services. I don't think that, I think you just scratched the services or the, the surface of all the services. or the, the surface of all the services that are provided. And I agree, I think that it's more of an and and less of, you know, swatch, slipping, moving from downtown to the West Side. But my comments are really for Deputy Chief Costello. I really, I really enjoyed hearing about the ways that it could serve the community better. And at the same time, if I'm honest, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around having a community center or community hub that also has a police substation in it. I think probably for the obvious reasons of, of, you know, how, how, how do we make it so that it is something that can be inviting to people still? And so I would just love to, it sounds like maybe at a different time, hear more about what the intentionality of that would look like.
Of course, we can talk about it later. I don't want to get in trouble with the mayor, but I think Paul may have a couple of comments that may address that a little bit more too. So.
Yeah, so I'll attempt to wrap up here really quickly. And then I think that will cover, cover that a little bit. So the whole intent of this is not to say that tomorrow we're going to do this. The intent of this is to take a feasibility study that looked at an aquatic facility and then really broaden the scope to look at a variety of partnerships and what those could look like and how they could function and coexist together. So a whole, this whole process is really around the feasibility. And I bring that up because PrAC had a, a pretty extensive discussion at their last meeting about this. And at the end of it, it was actually one of the PrAC members that said, you know, we're not deciding on this just based on this action. We're deciding to move forward with more feasibility and analysis. And that's when really the, the bulk of the group or all of the group unanimously decided to recommend to move forward with it. And so it's, it's really around the feasibility. But just to, just to wrap it all up and put a bow on it, what we would be looking to do is merge the aquatics study with the OSD Harrison property, evaluate options to reduce the cost of the aquatics facility, particularly if no partners come forward. I do want to say I have had since our last stakeholder meeting, a connection with Jennifer Pretty with the School District and then Elizabeth McHugh with Evergreen State College. And Evergreen does have an interest in investing in the competitive needs of swimming for the area. And so there's a potential with this that our two pool option could become a one pool option where we're more focused on the recreation side of things. And then Evergreen invests in their pool and really beefs up the competitive needs. And so those are the sort of things that we would talk about with this next phase of the analysis. And that would allow us to drastically reduce the cost of the aquatics portion of our scope pretty significantly. Because having those two bodies of water can be pretty costly. And Elizabeth did send me an email yesterday that she's talked with their new president and that he definitely supports continuing to look at that, that notion. So she emailed me last night in hopes to, to make sure that we had that information before today. Then they would also do a needs assessment for what we know about current day needs for the Recreation Division and the Olympia Center, the Senior, Senior Center and what their needs are, including what it would, what would their presence look like downtown. And then also how would a subs, police substation fit into all this? Would it be one large building that has an interesting way to go? Or, or do we look at separate buildings that are on this, more like a campus approach? And so those would be the sort of things we would look at. A question was brought up earlier about the Olympia Center and the future of that. One of my recommendations would be, and this would be something we would probably look at in this for consideration. Obviously, it would be up to the, to the council at the end of the day. But my recommendation would be to appraise and sell the Olympia Center for market value to be able to use as a down payment on the new facility. Because I think that, as I said, aquatic facilities are quite expensive. And if we could generate use and economic development and other things out of that space and then also have a hefty down payment on, on a future facility, that could be a way to jumpstart this project and help with, with some of those initial development costs. So again, that's a, that's something we would want to look at as part of this, but it doesn't mean that, that, that we would be limited to that path forward. And then also we'd want to look at what, what a concept plan look for the, look like for the OSD Harrison property. And, and then the last thing that I would say, and this was also something that was important to PrAC, is just because we move in this direction does not mean we're closing the door to regional partnerships. If the, say, the city of Tonewater were to come to us tomorrow and say, oh, we're all in on building a pool together. I think that's something we would want to continue to have that discussion and maybe go back to our earlier process and look at what that might look like. Because I do think from an aquatics perspective that a regional solution is the best. That being said, in the absence of this, this gives us a path forward to keep this project moving and keep the momentum going. But also all of this information, looking at the needs of the Olympia Center, looking at the needs of senior services, looking at the needs of the Police Department, learning more about this 27-acre property, those are all things that are of value, even if the aquatic facility were to move somewhere else or not. And so I just, I want to, I want to keep that door open and I think that's an important consideration. Some additional things that I think we want to include in the concept plan for this property. We know that making the property swap with the School District, that the soccer fields was a, a, a priority for a lot of community members. And one of the advantages that we talked about in doing that deal was having soccer fields in different areas of town rather than just being at one location. So if we could accommodate at least a soccer field, we also, our maintenance facility at Squawson Park is drastically outdated and undersized. We'll have a satellite facility at Yelm Highway when that's built. This West Side could be a third satellite facility. And actually, if you look at our park system, it's almost very evenly distributed by the Northeast, the Southeast, and the West Side. And so having these two satellite facilities could also solve ongoing parks maintenance need. And then also help us more efficiently serve those parks that's less driving mileage. Right now, everyone, or not everyone, the majority of maintenance staff report to Squawson Park and then they disperse and are driving to the far corners of the West Side and the far corners of Southeast. And having these regional facilities will improve, improve that. And then every survey we've ever done around parks, always the highest requested thing is, is more hiking and walking paths. So looking at, if you have a 27-acre property, you could put a, a good perimeter path on. I, I did skip over neighborhood parks, not intentionally. That is also an area where we have a need for an additional neighborhood park. So those would all be elements that we would look to build complimentary to this campus. And so, sorry if I went on too long, but.
No, I didn't. I was kind of joking, kind of not. I know some people thought we were going to go till eight and made plans, not, not. But we are here for the people. And so I'm going to go to Jim.
Yeah, I was asking if you were going to at least go down the line before we went away. So I'm going to approach it that way and maybe others will. Trying to get mine all in one set of comments. So I, I really appreciate this. And I don't have any question about the needs or, or the, or the, the future use of the Olympia Center within our needs. So my, my questions are more, or not, none of these are questions or comments to wrestle with for later. But, but really more around making sure that we put all these services in the right location. And so for me, the best part of town, the needs assessment needs to include the geographic need of each service. The county commissioners had this site as one of three courthouse sites, and it was thrown out because of accessibility for the public. And I think that's a big concern, that I'd like to at least understand what is different now. The, also, I think it's important to assess the meeting space needs in the community. You know, something between the size of Indian Summer and the Red Lion might be something we needed before COVID, but is it still now? I, I don't know. Maybe, probably, but something to be, to, to know about as we go into that design. What will be the future use? I, I think within this study or as a second piece, I'd like to have somebody else tell us what your recommendation was. Is what's the best use of the downtown lot and, and the Olympia Center in that, in that transition? And then lastly, when, when, when Chief Costello started talking, I was thinking, maybe we need a full-service customer service center on the West Side. I mean, like you think about just the, the volume of people coming downtown for the, for the front counter. Maybe, maybe there are more city services that could be co-located. And then just a cautionary, I think a lot of people hoped that the Police Department would be a more accessible design in City Hall, and it's just not. And so if we go down that road, building something that is open and welcoming and not what we typically think of for a armored facility, for lack of a better description, would be what I would hope for in that, that sort of community hub, which I think is a great, a great vision. And if, if Paul sells the senior center, I want to know what Brian's going to do, but that's another conversation too. So, thank you.
You bet. Ian?
Yeah, I'm really excited about this and looking forward to have more conversations about it. And, and really, I, I guess I don't have too many questions. It's really, I just, I'm looking forward to the next time. I just like, okay, we've talked about all of these great things that could happen, all of these needs we have now. I'm looking forward to a contractor that can help me see it, take me through, what am I looking at? You know, and, and then also those pieces around accessibility, absolutely. But so I, I would love to, you know, the next time around, get, get more on, so are we charging people? What does that look like? What are the hours? What is, just how are we going to really fit all of these things into one space, which I think is really exciting? So, yeah, so I guess minimal in the comments, just what is this going to look like?
Right, Dante?
Yeah, just mostly gratitude for tonight's presentation. Thank you for being here. I will say that I'm just like, I live on the West Side and I'm just thinking about all of the different things that are happening. I'm thinking about the Triangle Subarea Plan and the Aquatic Center being in that space. And yeah, there's just so, so much. And I, I guess I would say we have a, a few different proposals, permit changes and things like that happening over there. There's so much happening. And I just, I, it actually makes me think about the importance of the Police Department's presence on that side of the city, actually. And I think that I can't stress enough the importance of that connection of drawing that between the community, in particular the neighborhoods. I think it was you, Jim, that mentioned having, you know, something that doesn't look like a traditional type of, you know, facility. What we have right now is honestly, it looks kind of hidden. It kind of looks like a speech trap. It looks like maybe you're trying to like catch people who are like going through to school, you know, so too fast or like, it doesn't really, it doesn't seem inviting. And so I think it's really important that we have a, a space that is very visible, particularly as that part of the town is, is booming. And lastly, I just want to say how exciting it really is. I, I think that it's exciting to think about all of the, the living and working and playing in Olympia that's going to happen as a result of it. And it's very exciting to think about the intersection of all these different proposals happening all at the same time. So looking forward to when it actually happens. So, thank you.
Danny?
I too am a West Side resident, so I get excited when I hear about plans for the West Side. And I'm really glad to hear the, you know, what are we doing downtown and on the West Side? Because in our last presentation, we were just talking about how we bring more people downtown when downtown's not going to look the same ever that it was pre-COVID. And so, so I, I do feel a little bit of nervousness around like moving things out of downtown. So Brian, I'm really glad to hear the, what are we doing downtown and also broadening the geography to, to serve more people. And with these three choices in front of us, I, I don't feel prepared to really give direction yet. This is, this is all feels kind of a hard, a hard pivot to what, what has been discussed before with the aquatics feasibility study. And, you know, we haven't yet talked about like the future of policing on the West Side and the police station or, or, and stuff like that. And I just feel like I need some time to sit with it and more information. The map that shows a broader geographic area, you know, what is the relationship with this particular parcel to the high-density housing that we have on the West Side, to the Capitol Mall Triangle, to the future connection with 101? You know, there's so many things that I can't, I, I'm a very visual person and I just can't quite picture it. So I feel very hesitant to say, yes, go ahead and see what this looks like, not having those basic pieces to know that it's, you know, that, that all these pieces, you know, might possibly fit together. You know, what, how does this connect to our comprehensive plan and the land use goals in our comprehensive plan? You know, Sam, you mentioned that this is pretty far on the edge of the West Side, you know? Is this bringing us towards the goals that we're trying to achieve with the Capitol Mall area, actually, in terms of having that high-density area with a strong concentration of housing and services? You know, how does this connect to all of that? So I, I need some time with it and some more information, some more visual information. But I, I do have a question too. And my understanding where we left off is that this parcel isn't ours yet. We're, we're waiting on some action from the School District to know for certain that, that this is ours to, to plan around. So can you give a little bit of an update on that?
Yeah, so you're correct. It's currently owned by the School District. We have, our legal department has been backlogged with the RFA and the other work. So they haven't had capacity to move forward with the agreement. But they're optimistic and talking with Mark, he's optimistic that later this spring, I think early summer, we're hoping to make some progress. So that hopefully will be back to council, whether it be summer, fall, or later this year. Jay, I don't know if you have any other updates?
Yeah, this is now the top priority for the legal team, is they're moving on to these agreements to get this done. So Paul's timeframe of kind of late spring, early summer to get these in front of council is, is what we're looking at.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like a couple of years out and we're just like super eager. But I, I know for myself, like I, I, I need a little bit more to know for certain to say, oh yes, go ahead, work with this consultant and figure out how these pieces fit together. Because, you know, we were just talking about what, what are some other potential, you know, pieces that could be in this? It, it's a lot to take in and it's a lot to like, you know, to, to be able to give direction on.
All right, I'm going to go to Clark, and I'll make some comments and then I'll have our study manager close.
Good. So I, I agree with Danny that I, I also, I didn't intend to make any decisions or direction in a study session, especially with the first blush at this. So I'd like to consider your, your request about whether you think council would urge moving forward or no action and alternative. And, and part of my hesitation, as much as I would love for us to finally succeed of getting a swimming pool, because that's been across my adult life and, and years, multiple attempts, right? Is, is that we've, we've got the armory, we're going to try to build out. I still have, how do you make the Public Works Maintenance Center rise to a level where it, it gets done? And we just talked today about 108 State and whether we might have a continued city subsidy on that, that property. So when we're in a place where we're not exactly flush or gaining each year in tax revenue, I, I just want us to be cautious about, even though these are each awesome things that would be great for the community, just make sure we're really deliberate about how we, how we imagine that we'll, we'll pull this off in the near term. So I, I'm excited about that. And I just, you know, Councilmember Quinn had asked about like how you make the police station friendly and part of a, of a community hub like this. At Woodruff Park, they were very successful by having a cheap soda pop machine right in front of the station. And lots, lots of grade school kids like to stop by there, including our kids as they were growing up. So subsidized soda pop is always one way to win friends.
Good one, a good one. I just want to thank everyone for their comments. I also believe that we need to incorporate the Capitol Mall Triangle results. As far as the space needs analysis and what they want there, like, because my first thought is there's so many empty spaces in the, in the mall. And wouldn't that be great to have a, a police station in the mall? Wouldn't it be great to have a senior center in the mall?
Wouldn't it be great to have a senior center in the mall? You know, so I just, I want to, want to hold my, you know, like yes, go forth and figure this out with a, a new feasibility study until we get the results back from the Capitol Mall triangle. So that's kind of where I am. But thank you.
And the timing, it sounds like the timing for knowing whether or not we have this parcel for sure is going to align with the results of the Capitol Mall triangle.
Absolutely. And, and to your, your point about, you know, gosh, we have a lot of really exciting projects that we want for our community, but they all cost a lot, a lot of money. But, you know, Paul has shown that he, he and his team are miracle workers when it comes to grants. And they also have their own dedicated revenue stream in the MPD, so.
Yeah, I would just add too that part of selling the Olympia Center, currently we subsidize that building by roughly a million dollars a year, every single year, just to keep the doors open and keep the lights on and do the operation. So part of the idea of moving to a modern facility is the subsidy that's supporting the Olympia Center would then move and that would help with whatever subsidy would be required at the new parts. So that would be part of it. And then the other thing that I would add is that we don't currently have the resource. If, if we were to do this feasibility study and build this dream facility and look at a way to move forward, we don't have the resources within our existing budget. So it would require some level of a community vote, whether that be an extension of the MPD or looking at some other funding source as a possibility. That would definitely be required as, as part of this. But that's, that's what this feasibility study would lead us towards is, is looking at some of those things.
Excellent. And just a little, another side note, here I am chatting more. But the, in the legislature, there's currently a bill that Senator Hunt has co-signed with somebody from the, Hawkins from the east side around another PFD for aquatic facilities specifically. So if that's, and that's kind of getting some traction. So that would another, be another option. Okay, now, city manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. One is I was sitting here thinking about, as we were talking about this, about the other links to other plans, Capitol Mall, subarea, the fact that we're probably spring, summer before we have these agreements wrapped up with OSD anyway. So I think it, it's natural for us to kind of take away kind of some of what we heard tonight, wait for those things to finish up, get the agreements done. And then we can return to you when we have certainty on all these things. We have certainty of ownership. We know what the links are to the, what the other needs are. Potentially that'll allow us to explore some of the other options like the mall and other things for some of these things to see if, if some of these components might fit better there as well. Because just my question to Paul, and actually not a question, my guidance based on Mayor Protem's statement as well is we do have a variety of facility needs beyond, beyond these, which is a new maintenance center in particular. And so we have a lot of other needs. And so how do we stack all these up and what's that look like? And I think we need to take some time to, to prioritize all of those as well. And when we finally get to a feasibility study, I think it'll be a really important, Paul, that we talk about how it's, how it could be phased. Because it may be that we can get funding for an aquatic center through a new PFD and other revenue sources faster than we could get the whole rest of it built. So it might be something to think about, how we think about how we phase these pieces together and these components together and what that looks like as part of any analysis we might do. But I think we can return in late spring, early summer, if that works for council and kind of revisit where we are and these other links and see where we go from there, if that works for you.
Ian?
I have a quick one. I've seen some, some questioning heads. Mayor and city manager Bernie, for the listening public, what is PFD?
Public Facilities District, which is what we use to fund the Hands-on Children's Museum. Yeah, thanks for that. All right. Are we good? Are we good? All right. We're going to adjourn and we will see our community next week at 6:00 PM for our regular business meeting. Good night.